Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 8 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us here this evening. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please.
Councilmembers Jensen, Kylie, Nightzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
All right. With us tonight to give our invocation is Samantha Sharda. Samantha's a campus pastor resident at the Ransom Church. So I'd ask that you rise for that invocation, and then stay standing for a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for gathering us together tonight to have this meeting for the better of our city. God, we just pray for peace in Sioux Falls, and that you will just allow us to have the spirit of loving our neighbors, and that that is what this time is for, is how to love our neighbors better. And so we pray that you bless this time, that it's a time of construction, a time of building each other up. And yeah, we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, we got a couple special guests. Boy Scout Troop 152, where are you at?
All right, sprinkled around, and a couple Cub Scout Troops, Pack Three, you guys. Green hat, can't miss you over there. Thanks for being here. You can feel free to come and go during this meeting as long as you want. So I assume you're here for a merit badge tonight? All right. Well, welcome. We will move on. Item four is our consent agenda, and look for any changes or emotion there.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Nightzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Skip ahead to item thirty-seven, then our regular agenda, look for a motion.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve the regular agenda. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Nightzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero. Before we go on to our agenda, just a reminder, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input will be five minutes. And for all items, comments are limited to the item under consideration at the time only. So with that being said, we'll move on to item thirty-eight.
Second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving amendment number one to the monopole lease agreement number sixteen dash thirty-three ninety-one. Sponsor, mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Edward Lewis. I'm representing the Public Works Department, Water Division. I ask for your support on these amendments.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on item thirty-eight tonight? Counsel, you got any questions on the second reading on this one?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Nightzer.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Nightzer. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Nightzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item thirty-nine, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving amendment number one to water tank lease agreement number sixteen dash thirty-three ninety-two. Sponsor, mayor.
Again, I'm Edward Lewis, representing the Water Division for this amendment. Ask for your support.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, any questions on this second reading?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Nightzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving an agreement related to termination of water tank lease agreement number sixteen dash thirty-three ninety-three. Sponsor, mayor.
Edward Lewis, representing the Water Department on this amendment as well, and ask for your support.
All right. Anyone from the public want to speak on this one? Any questions here, counsel? Can I get a motion?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve item forty. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Nightzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty-one, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one eleven, alcoholic beverages. Sponsor, mayor.
Sean, good evening.
Good evening. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. I'm going to make a request to have this item deferred until the April fifth meeting. There's a couple items that we're still working on. One, first, we talked last week about Senate Bill one fifty-six, which did end up passing both houses of the legislature this past week. We're awaiting the governor's signature on that, and that will impact a separate section of this ordinance, one eleven dot zero zero three, where it talks about use of population estimates and the issuance of the number of licenses. So we'd like to hopefully be able to address that at a similar time, as well as address some. We have some clarification. We're waiting from the Department of Revenue related to some of the other sections as well. Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public want to speak on this item tonight? All right, Counselor Sale?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to defer to Tuesday, August, or excuse me, April fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to defer to April five. Any discussion there? Counselor Brecky?
I would just like to reach out and offer. I've got, I had a couple of amendments, friendly amendments, but I didn't have time to really work through the administration in this short. So I was really pleased tonight to hear that it was deferred. I did have Keith Allenstein do some legal research, and I think there's just a couple of things that we need to do again that could, would be considered friendly amendments. So I ask if, when you're working on this, if you'd reach out to me. I'd like to be able to get that done before the second reading, if possible.
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Nightzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that deferral passes six to zero. Move to item forty-two.
First reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving permanent easements. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, Sharapa Two, Q O Z B LLC.
Dustin, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. The Sharapa Place Development Team is requesting a seven point three three foot no-build zone over the western portion of the city's bike trail property on the eastern edge of the Sharapa Developments and the eastern edge of our rail yard redevelopment area. On the screen, you can see the yellow area that's being identified, and you can see the aerial where the bike trail currently exists. The city retained ownership of approximately thirty to thirty-five feet along the eastern edge of the rail yard redevelopment area for the bike trail that was part of the rail yard redevelopment plan, as was adopted in that plan in twenty fifteen. The proposed, development's proposed parking garage design is currently six point four one feet west of the city's property line on the north end. It's four point six seven feet west of the city property line on the south end. The seven point three three foot easement would provide a seven foot separation between the eastern edge of the parking garage and where any future development could happen. The separation of ten feet is required by building code, and this is really a fire safety issue that because of the type of structure that they're building, they need that separation so that we're not, we're basically granting this no-build easement, saying that we're not going to build in that area, so that they can construct the property and project as designed. The no-build zone, again, really acts as that fire separation line between the property. This exhibit, the second exhibit here is a little harder to see with the red line, but this does show the other improvements. You can see the parking garage, building Sharapa Three and Sharapa Four on the west side of the property or the left side of the exhibit. And you can see on the far right side is where our bike trail is constructed, and ultimately, this is, would be where the no-build zone area would be. When we looked at the request, the city doesn't have any intention of building anything within this area. It's being used as a bike trail, will be used as that for the future. Landscaping the bike trail and the use of that would all be allowed within the area. So knowing that, the Planning Department has supported this request for an easement and is asking for a date of second reading for next Tuesday.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, any questions for Mr. Powers here? Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yes. Tell me, give me the definition of a no-build, or at least the ordinance definition of what a no-build zone. I guess my concern is, does that include landscaping, or trees, or anything that we would add, you know, even a bench or something to, along the bike trail as part of that?
The easement dictates kind of what that is, is how we've defined it. Basically, we would not be able to erect any building or structure in that area. A structure would be considered something, you know, where probably a roof structure or something like that, you know, if we were to do a bulletin board, or even just a bench or trash receptacles, things like that, that wouldn't qualify as a structure. So we'd still be able to do any of that as necessary. As currently designed with the way the path runs, we would have still opportunity to do that on the other side of the bike trail if we wanted to. And then this only runs the length of the parking garage. So further south, next to rail yard flats, we would also have opportunities if we wanted to, let's say, do a bench with a canopy structure or something over it. But we are limited with space. The space is only, again, depending on where we at in the city property, around thirty feet, about ten of that, ten to twelve of that's being used up by trail already. So we are kind of limited on space. But we would still have opportunity to do the standard kind of amenities that we would want to do there.
Perfect. Thank you. Other questions for Dustin here on this one? Counselor Nightzer, do you have a question or a motion?
Just, I'll make a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March fifteenth.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Nightzer, seconded by Jensen on that. Any discussion there, counsel? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Nightzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that item passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty-three is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations to support construction and operation of the Dakota State University Applied Cyber Research Lab located in the Sioux Falls Cyber Innovation Park in the city of Sioux Falls. Ten million. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Sponsor, mayor.
All right, I'm going to pass the gavel to Counselor Sale to chair this item, because I want to speak to it if I can. Counsel, start off by saying, I know you had informational today on this, you got a lot of details on it today. You'll get some more here at first reading. So before you is a ten million dollar funding appropriation for infrastructure and programmatic support in support of a cyber research building to be housed at DSU's Applied Research Lab. The building will be located in the Cyber Innovation Park alongside Sanford Health Virtual Care Center. So it's our first foray into having a true cyber innovation park in Sioux Falls. Now, this project, in my opinion, is one of the most historic economic development investments we've made at this dais, long before our time even. Our confidence level in the city is very high on this project. We have some great partners that are going to speak a little bit to this project today. But often we use the phrase, I mean, I can't tell you how many times we talk about the next Citibank here in Sioux Falls. We use that phrase all the time, and we talk about the transformation that Citibank brought to this community. Well, this has the opportunity to be that project, I think, for us here in Sioux Falls. And right now, it's really about seizing a moment, seizing an opportunity, both financially, both with the right partners coming together, and with the right opportunity in front of us. You know, Sioux Falls has always been very good at diversifying our economic base. And we're strong in finance, we're strong in healthcare, we're strong in manufacturing, we're increasingly strong in technology, and this will be in addition to that already growing technology sector growth with the addition of cyber to the growing industries that have built this community. What excites me a lot about this project is we have the chance to bring a project to Sioux Falls that, at its peak, in this first building, could have five hundred jobs, all paying six figures or more. And I can't think of the last time we saw a project like that or an opportunity like that come before us. Certainly not while I've been in the chair, and I would say not, again, since Citibank, have we seen an opportunity like that come before us. We also know that those jobs have a multiplier effect, the other spinoff jobs that are created, the entrepreneurial opportunities that are created, some of these cyber research analysts and researchers that will be working in this applied research building will eventually leave, will eventually start new ventures, but will be so in love with Sioux Falls that those ventures will be housed here, and it has a chance for us to really put a flag in the sand nationally as an area of the country that is leading in cyber research and technology. It's very rare to see a collaboration like this happen, as you heard this afternoon. It takes leadership and vision on a lot of levels. It really has started with Dr. Griffiths at DSU, and that has turned into a collaboration, which I have used this phrase, as a public-public-public-private-private partnership. When you talk about DSU, you talk about the state, you talk about the city, you talk about the Development Foundation, you talk about Danny Sanford, you talk about Sanford Health, all those players have come together to make this project happen and to bring it to fruition. Just yesterday, SB fifty-four and SB one thirty passed through the legislature. They just await the governor's signature, which she can't wait to sign, I know. So that will appropriate eighty million dollars toward this project. We're looking at appropriating ten million dollars for a ninety million dollar investment in this historic project. So, you know, it's our role as the administration and as city councilors to really look past our time in office. How are we setting up this community for ten, twenty years from now? And I think this project has a chance to be the next generation project for the city of Sioux Falls from an economic development standpoint and from an industry diversification standpoint. So tonight, we get to take the first step in hopefully passing this to a second reading. I would really encourage your support on this project. With me tonight is a few folks that I've asked to speak on behalf of the project as well. First, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Griffiths from DSU, Tony Van Heisen with the Board of Regents is here, Miles Beckham with Premier Bankard, and then finally, Sean Pritchett is going to come up and talk about the financials of this and how that will work out. So with that, I want to turn over the floor to Dr. Griffiths. Good evening, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Yose Marie Griffiths, the president of Dakota State University. And Dakota State has developed this five-year plan and public-private partnership to stimulate a vibrant cyber research industry in South Dakota, based in Sioux Falls and a little bit in Madison. This industry will support national security and defense, offer workforce and economic development opportunities, establish Sioux Falls and Madison as a Midwest regional cyber innovation hub, and South Dakota as a cyber state. The plan calls for us to build a cyber research facility to house DSU's Applied Research Lab in Sioux Falls. This facility, the order of magnitude a hundred thousand square feet, and as you've already heard, would house four hundred to five hundred full-time on-site researchers. These federal and private sector jobs will continue, contribute to economic development with these very high starting salaries for potential annual activity, order of magnitude a hundred million dollars per year or more. It will attract related cybersecurity and IT businesses to the state, and it will spin off new ventures into the cyber-related fields. The public and private partnerships, partners that have come together in support of our plan are Denny Sanford, Sanford Health, Forwards Sioux Falls, the Governor and the State of South Dakota, the Board of Regents, and Dakota State University. And I'm here today, I hope, that the city of Sioux Falls will join this partnership with a contribution of ten million dollars. I believe this project will be a game changer for the state, will propel Sioux Falls and the state of South Dakota to be recognized for national security and defense. And the accumulated expertise will be located here, and the cutting-edge research that will be conducted will act as a force that will then attract others to come and co-locate in the area. So we do hope that the city of Sioux Falls will join us in this transformational effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Griffiths?
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Tony Van Heisen, a member of the, excuse me, a member of the South Dakota Border Regents, and I'd like to echo what the mayor said and what President Griffiths said. You know, I was thinking just now, I think it was five or six years ago, that South Dakota had the good fortune of bringing President Griffiths to our state to lead Dakota State University. And I was in the governor's office at that time, and we got to meet with her, and from the very first meeting, it was clear that she had a vision for what could happen at Dakota State and where we could go, far beyond that of anybody else. And at that time, Governor Dugard was happy to join her, and Danny Sanford and Miles Beckham were happy to join her, and together, we made some great things happen in Madison. But even then, we knew that the vision was so large that it would, it would need to go beyond Madison. And what we have right now is one of the best schools in the country at what they do in cybersecurity, and I think a state university that's unique in the country in terms of a school of its size, offering this type of a program and competing with really any other school you can think of. We know the demand is there for, on the part of students who want to go into programs like this. We're building that demand in the K-12 schools through the outreach efforts there. We know that the demand nationally is there for these employees, and we know that these are jobs that can be cited right here in South Dakota and right here in Sioux Falls. So on behalf of the Border Regents, we are very excited to be one of the partners along with the state and the city and Sanford Health and Premier Bankard. And I've commented before that, as the mayor said, Sioux Falls has diversified its economy over time with these other sectors, and I just find it very appropriate that you see Sanford Health, the healthcare sector, Premier Bankard, the finance sector, joining with these government partners to give rise to what I think will be the next major sector in the Sioux Falls economy. So on behalf of the Border Regents, we will be the landlord of this facility, and we will operate it, and we look forward to a very long and successful partnership here in Sioux Falls. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor and city council, thank you for allowing me some time to speak tonight. Want to really touch on three things, the opportunity, strength, and the future of Sioux Falls, and what this project has to do. First of all, I was born and raised here in Sioux Falls, love the city, love the state, and this is just an opportunity that's just incredible and phenomenal for the state of South Dakota. When I was growing up, there just were not a lot of jobs in South Dakota or in Sioux Falls. When I graduated in nineteen eighty-one, I thought I was going to have to leave the state for a job. And I was fortunate, at that time, Citibank was transitioning from New York to South Dakota. What's surprising is when Citibank sent their leaders here to train us, they didn't think we'd be very well, do very well. And we, our goal was always to beat what their goals were and their actual productivity and quality standards were in a very short period of time, and usually we did that within sixty days. And at that point, it built our confidence that we could compete, not only in Sioux Falls, in South Dakota, the Midwest, the country, and now we're competing in the world, when you look at that with what Dakota State is offering us to do. The strength, just building that confidence with us and Sioux Falls that we can compete is, again, an incredible accomplishment. And we don't have that, any type of a complex that we can't compete, not only in the Midwest, but worldwide. The future with this program is just an incredible opportunity for us. And when you look at our city, we need to continue to diversify, and that's with businesses as well. And when you look at the strength in the financial systems in the industry we have here in Sioux Falls, the healthcare systems, and now you look at cybersecurity and cyber research, bringing that in, it just gives us another leg on that stool to really make us a much stronger community. And it really sets us for the future. The mayor stated, what Citibank did to South Dakota would really change the landscape of South Dakota, and it did. Now, this cybersecurity and cyber research will, again, change the landscape of not only Sioux Falls, but South Dakota. Talked about all the other jobs that will come in because of this, the expertise that we have today. Today, we're losing those students to DC and the larger cities in the east and west coast. We're going to be able to keep the students here, or those young people here, with great-paying jobs, and we're going to be able to bring some of those people that graduated from South Dakota, left the state, we're going to give them the opportunities to come back to the state of South Dakota, to continue to help us become a stronger state. And Sioux Falls is truly going to be that center of excellence here. So thank you very much for your consideration. This Innovation Park, Cyber Innovation Park, is going to be a huge asset for Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. It's a pleasure to come before you and talk a little bit about this opportunity before us to make this significant investment in a cyber and applied research lab here in Sioux Falls. As you've heard and seen in the media, as well as the informational today and previous communication on this topic, the request that's coming before you in the supplement is for a ten million dollar investment to help support this project, which leverages another eighty million dollars of support from both the state of South Dakota, private donors, as well as nonprofit and other contributors, as well as Sanford Health. Might be daunting, I know Jeff Eckoff said today during the informational that he had the easy job of being able to introduce the project, and I got the fun job of coming forward with the appropriation request this evening. But when we first heard about this opportunity within our finance department, we saw the vision for where this could go for our community. And when you make this type of transformative investment in the community, in relative terms to the opportunity that it will have for the community over the many years to come, it doesn't seem quite as daunting or significant. But certainly, it's something that you want to give due consideration for, because it is a significant investment of the city's funds into this project, and we can talk this evening about where those funds would come from and the impact that will have to the city's financial status as well. So first thing, I do want to talk just a little bit about the two pieces of legislation, so you are familiar with them. I know many of you are already, but they were spoken to a bit today. There's two pieces of legislation, they have both passed, the House and the Senate, at the state legislature, and are awaiting the governor's signature. And the first is for the thirty million dollars, and this is primarily being used to expand the number of graduates from Dakota State University's cyber programs, as well as the governors' related, programs related to high school students, and expanding the ability to outreach to those with cyber type of programming. This is integral to the project, because we need to have the conduit for the graduates that we would need in order to fill the jobs that we anticipate being created as a result of this facility. The second piece of legislation, and the more important one relative to the project here in Sioux Falls, is SB one thirty, which appropriated fifty million dollars to the South Dakota Border Regents for the construction of the Applied Research Lab. Couple of other things to note within this legislation, it provides for the receipt and expenditure of other outside funding related to the project. This is the vehicle through which we would expend the city's funding in a future agreement with the South Dakota Border Regents, and I'll talk about that here in a moment. It also accepts the donation of the sixteen acres of land in Sioux Falls from Sanford Health. Our funding, as was discussed by Dr. Griffiths here earlier at the informational, will be utilized primarily for construction of infrastructure-related improvements at the site, as well as startup expenditures related to security, and ramping up the facility as it reaches sustainability, as well as programming and outreach in relation to that facility. The actions that we need to take is a ten million dollar appropriation, which is before you this evening, and we would appropriate those funds to the Planning and Development Department, through which they would be, we have to be able to appropriate to a specific department within our city. The source of those funds are the unassigned fund, general fund balance, which provides ultimate flexibility, and generally, that's what people would refer to as our reserves or our carryforward of unobligated funds into twenty twenty-two. The distribution and transfer of those funds would be governed by a future agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and the South Dakota Border Regents. That would be coming before you in the months ahead, and is subject to council approval. We do anticipate looking to make a one-time transfer of these funds to the South Dakota Border Regents as part of that agreement. As far as the affordability of these funds and the impact for the city in terms of its financial wherewithal and stability. To begin to tell the story, you've seen this graph here. We've added December, so we probably haven't shown this publicly at this point. But this, every month, we show this as part of our monthly financial statement, and as you can see, after going through the twenty twenty pandemic year, we've been very lucky to have received significant increases in our sales tax revenues over the past year. In fact, we ended twenty twenty-one with nine and a half million more in sales taxes within the general fund than we had anticipated in the original budget. Overall, we ended up nineteen point three percent up in sales taxes over the course of twenty twenty-one, and in January twenty twenty-two, we are already up eighteen percent for that month, month over month, when you look at January of twenty twenty-one. In showing this chart, you've seen this before. In showing this chart, you've seen this before, both in our annual financial reviews, as well as part of our budgeting process. But you can see here the history of our general fund reserve over time. We have a 25% policy threshold that we want to retain in reserves at all times. And then we manage to that as we go through different years where we have higher expenses or lower expenses, depending on what the needs of that particular year are. Always trying to manage for that 25% into the future and making sure that we're not projecting that we drop below that. In particular, I would point to the last two years. So 2020, you'll see there, you can see, it's hard to read on this chart here, but that kind of light bluish color, that's, that amount is $85.1 million. And then the rest of it is $62.6 million. So the difference between that is that one-time LGA or local government assistance we received from the feds. And we've been trying to show that a little bit separately over time because we didn't want to, we knew that was one-time funding. We really wanted to show what the impact of the true operations to the city were. So as we go into 2021, and I'll go in more detail on this, but we enter 2022 having a fund balance of $77.7 million. Most of the local government assistance dollars have been allocated and appropriated. Not all of them, there's about $4.8 million that still sits in there that's been designated by the city council for specific purposes. Hasn't been, part of it was appropriated for the Butterfly House that expired at the end of last year. But those funds are still anticipated to be moved forward and are anticipated as part of the projections here we're going to show you as we go into the next section here. So this one will take me a little time to walk through, but I want to make sure that I'm very clear as to what you're seeing here and then what the overarching synopsis or what you can take from these different columns here. So the first column there is our 2021 actual numbers for the general fund. And you won't see the full financial report until April 19th, after the audit has been completed. So the audit is in progress. We do not expect these numbers to change at all. So to give you a snapshot of where we've been with the general fund, we started with a beginning balance of $85 million. We had 191, or excuse me, $192 million in revenues. We had expenditures of almost $198 million, so expenditures exceeded revenues. But I would also point out that we had 17.6 million of one-time allocation and expenditure of funds within that year related to all the local government assistance we had. So that wasn't related to regular operations. So net-net, our revenues, our expenditures were 6 million more than revenues. However, if you take away all those local one-time dollars that we allocated or spent or expended last year, we actually added about $10 million to our reserves from just an operating standpoint overall. As you look at the second column there, what I want to point out is this was our projection of what the general fund would look like when we went into budgeting last year for 2022. So these were developed in June and July and August, when we were going through the budgeting process and ultimately approval in September. And we had to make certain assumptions as to what our financial or our funds would look like. So you can see, we expected a beginning balance of $64 million, but we're actually carrying $77 million into the year. What's the difference with that? Well, we assumed all local government allocations had been made as part of that. So all the allocations were assumed to have been out the door, which didn't necessarily occur in last year. Secondly, we had higher forecasted revenue than we anticipated when we were budgeting. So we baseline 2021 estimating that we were going to be at 10% net increase in sales taxes and then added another 4% onto that when we get to 2022, and that's how we set our revenue forecast. We ended up with 19.3% revenue growth. And so there's a significant amount of increase in that baseline that happened or occurred as a result of that, generating more revenue coming in to the city. We also had, we always have turnback of expenses every year. We estimate that at 2% generally. We ended up at a 4.5% turnback of expenses overall. I mean, our primary driver of that is snow removal savings of about $2.5 million. We had various personnel savings from positions that were unfilled. And then, of course, we have that $4.8 million of local government assistance dollars that we didn't expend yet last year, that we still contemplate expending in 2022 and beyond. So, but the main story here is we originally anticipated an ending fund balance at the end of 2022 of $63.3 million and holding 30, almost 31.5% to 32% in reserves at the end of 2022. That's the number we had when we budgeted. The last column is what we're updating our forecast to at the current time, based on a number of factors. First, we know what the ending balance was coming into 2022, which was 70, almost $78 million. We're projecting revenues of $204 million when we originally budgeted at $195 million. Again, the difference there is we had a significant uptick in sales taxes last year over what we had projected in the budget. You take a 4% growth on 19% versus a 4% growth on 10%, and that transfer, that translates into about $6.5 million in additional revenue. Also incorporated into that is about $4 million of liquor license revenue that we didn't have budgeted within there as well. So that's been added to some of those things that have been contemplated, as well as any other changes to revenues that we have some for expectations as we move forward, including probably some reduction in investment revenue, a reduction in health charge revenue as well, and other changes that we're contemplating at this point. As far as overall expenses, we have overall expenses right now set at 216 million, not all of it appropriated yet. We had budgeted expenditures of $200 million. So the difference being, one, the employer of choice incentive program that you approved last week as a supplement for $2.3 million. We've included the $10 million assumed expenditure for the DSU for this applied research lab. We have been, have expecting a reduction of expenses of about $1.3 million related to the fact that we did not increase healthcare premiums. We expect also full expenditure of the .8 million for the Butterfly House that was deobligated at the end of last year that will have to be brought forward again, as well as the funds that have been set aside for workforce diversification as part of the Sioux Falls For All initiative that this council had agreed to previously. So all of those are incorporated into the increase there of the 200, almost $17 million. At the end of the day, then, we end up with an ending balance, right now presumed to be around $69 million. The story to tell you here is two things. One, on a gross amount value, you can see that we're already projecting, even with all these additional expenditures, that our general fund will end up about $6 million higher than we originally anticipated in the budget. And secondly, that our available budget reserve relative to the size of the budget remains virtually unchanged, going from 31.6% to 31.9%. This just shows us graphically, so you can see the 22 budget as it was originally anticipated in our current projections based on where revenues are coming in, as well as all of the additional expenditures that were either supplemented last week, supplemented in the current weeks for this project, as well as those that may be forthcoming here in the weeks ahead, weeks and months ahead. In terms of a total overall timeline, March 8th, this is the first reading. March 15th, we will take second reading and request approval for the $10 million appropriation. And then, as I noted before, the next step after that will be the drafting, execution, and ultimately council approval of an agreement between the South Dakota Board of Regents and the city of Sioux Falls that would allow for the transfer of these funds. Last thing, I will just comment to this extent, overall, to kind of wrap this up, is we've talked a lot about plan, balance, and adapt. It was a theme that we brought forward two years ago when we had the budget and how important that has been. It's something that we talk about a lot as a council, as we talk about the finances of the city. We've always done well as a city over the past many decades because we've always had a good plan and we've always been thoughtful about thinking years ahead in terms of where we're making our investments. But we've always remained balanced as well. We've always kind of looked at the horizon and we've always tried to make sure we're balancing between funding operating expenses and making sure we're funding police and public safety and fire and filling potholes, balancing that with infrastructure investments as well. And even on the infrastructure side, we try to balance between reconstruction, road expansion, utilities, as well as quality of life improvements to make sure that we are meeting all of the needs and expectations of our community. But the last piece of that is adapt, and that's probably been the most important piece that we've had over the last year and a half, where we've had to deal with a COVID pandemic and many unexpected events and economic disruptions. And our ability to adapt and meander our way through that virtually unharmed as a city financially and perhaps even stronger as a city has been very important to us. But our ability to adapt is not just to address situations where there are economic disruptions or things of a negative nature. It also provides us the opportunity to make investments such as this that can be transformative for our community. This certainly will change the landscape and it really is a down payment that we will have on the future economic diversification of our city. And I think it really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be able to be approached with something like this and have this be something that could happen here in Sioux Falls. One of the things, and I'll leave with this, that was brought up by Dr. Griffiths today is there's, there's a broad range when it comes to cybersecurity. But this, this particular facility and the areas that they're focusing on is on national security and defense. And South Dakota has a long history with national security and defense, whether it's in the wilderness with the forts that were built here and the protection of the western boundaries, or whether it was the missile silos that were built on the western portion of the state or Ellsworth, Ellsworth Air Force Base. And, you know, as we look at the future of national defense, this is the area that is going to be most critical and important. And the fact that we have an opportunity for South Dakota to be on the leading edge of this in the times that we're living in right now and reminded of over the last several weeks, I think is, is even additionally important for our community to be, have that opportunity. So I appreciate the discussion with you today, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time, as well as the other guests that we have here.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Jeff Griffin, President of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. You all know what the chamber's goals are and the previous testimony. It would come as no surprise that we rise in tremendous support of this project. I don't know if there's a cybersecurity merit badge, but if you guys, in addition to earning your merit badge, you also should look up Dakota State University and look into cybersecurity futures, because that's exactly what this opportunity is going to provide to us. Beyond the impact of the initial 500 jobs coming to town and those wonderful salaries and a place for Dakota State graduates and graduates from other institutions to come to South Dakota, this helps us create more career paths for our young people here and gives us inroads into, into all of those, all of those resources that we have, we don't want to lose to the coasts. And besides the numbers associated with this project, which are significant, but have already been stated, from a Chamber of Commerce perspective, the energy that it provides our other 1,900 members who are growing their business, it gives entrepreneurs more confidence, developers more confidence, retailers more business. And to be able to partner, to have a city council that can bring this forward, and that doesn't happen everywhere in this country, so I commend you guys for doing that, to get the reserves that the, that the city has built, invested back into the future. It's a, it is a historic opportunity for us. And I want to briefly mention the Fort Sioux Falls role in this. President Griffiths was one of my first guests when I started here a little over two years ago, talking about this cyber innovation park. And it was built into our most recent Fort Sioux Falls campaign. So I think it speaks volumes that our, our hundreds of investors in Fort Sioux Falls also saw the importance of that for our community. So we strongly urge your support, and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other publics at this time? Seeing none, councilors, questions for staff? No questions. Counselor Neitz.
For Director Pritchett, regarding the reserve balance, I know you model this, you've, what have you, if you just assume that we end the year with the numbers that, that you're showing, what's your modeling for, let's say, the next five years as it relates to the general fund balance? Because there's always, you know, sometimes we have to make sure we have some extra because we know we're bringing, let's say, a fire station online and we're going to take maybe a million and a half hit for new salaries, things like that. So are you confident in the modeling that we stay well within that 25%?
I am, to the extent of, you know, so we're, if we go back to this slide here, so essentially we kind of, when we walk through the budgeting process, we kind of, we walk through what that projection for that general fund looks like in the very early stages of the budgeting process. So if you look at something like this and you say, okay, we're essentially at the same point we believe we were in the budgeting process. So if you look at those future years without a major change or a major increase in an encumbrance for the city that has an ongoing expense that wasn't previously contemplated, then that remains unchanged in those future years. And if anything, it's probably we're in an improved position, maybe than we were looking at at the time, at least in, in gross dollar amount form. The challenge that will be before us will be just what happens with inflation and some of the things that we're going to have that we can't begin to contemplate right now. And then the second thing we'll be looking at very carefully will be where will sales taxes be, you know, when we get to April and May of this year? Because we grew so rapidly beginning in April of last year, can we continue to maintain that momentum? Can we achieve even higher than where we were at, at that point? But I would say, you know, January and February have looked good, very good for the city thus far, and so that provides some positive momentum. But we'll be watching those merit numbers very carefully when we get to the second quarter.
Okay, thanks. And there's a lot of people in the audience, so it's probably worth noting because maybe not everybody is aware. We're, we are very rare in this country to have such an enormous reserve. We, we take this really seriously, that we have a, a good emergency fund and that we always make sure that we can fund government on a day-to-day basis and we're not taking out loans. We're not, you know, we don't have a lot of debt. And so we're very, very stable and we're very blessed, and that's because of a lot of good decisions. And that's, you know, with some luck and good decisions, that's why we're able to potentially take a $10 million drawdown and still be in a very strong financial position. So, thank you.
Counselors, other councilors have questions? Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the young people in the room have no idea what they're experiencing tonight. I know Mark stole some of my thunder on that, but I was looking back. You guys should make a note or a journal entry and save it for 10 years from now when you're finishing up high school and getting to the end and realize how lucky we are to have such a great community. And I'm glad you guys are here tonight. Director, a couple of the things that I, that stood out to me is that we're doing an appropriation for funds tonight, but then we're looking into the future of actually putting an agreement together. Does that seem a little cart before the horse? Or is it the speed of the, the project that we need to make? But it seems like appropriating the funds and then saying, okay, we'll work out the details later.
Typically, you know, the, the scope of what we're intending for these funds to be utilized for is set. And by moving forward with the appropriation, it shows commitment on the part of the city of Sioux Falls that we're going to follow through with this. And then it becomes a matter of the details of an agreement. And it's not unlike almost any other process that we go through at the city. For example, like when we move forward with some of the ARPA money, we budgeted for those items that went to various nonprofits in the community. And then, you know, it took us months to pull those agreements together to do that and bring those forward. It's not unlike a construction project where we say, well, we're going to go rebuild, you know, Minnesota Avenue from 12th to Russell. And we haven't bid the project yet, we haven't encumbered the funds, but we set aside the money with that specific intended purpose.
So as part of that, I guess, from the city's side, when you take this much in taxpayer funds to be a partner in this program, one of my questions is, and I meant to ask Mr. Veltoz in this afternoon, and I didn't get a chance, the nonprofit board, so we're taking, the regents are the overall entity that's kind of putting this together with state funds, with private funds, with the city funds. My concern is about the makeup of the nonprofit board. Will the city be given at least a seat or two on that board? And is there been any discussions of how we get to participate for our investment in the, the project?
I, I'll speak from the nonprofit board perspective because I think some of that has, has a little bit transformed over time. They've operated, Dr. Griffiths, maybe on a different model previously and are moving toward this, maybe you can speak to that, in terms of the ownership of this building. However, I would, I would fair to say, we haven't requested any involvement in terms of the, the participation on that board, primarily because in terms of the awareness, the city isn't necessarily an expert when it comes to these type of things. And there may be certain requirements they have in maintaining their licensure for that building. I don't know if you want to speak to that in further detail.
Very much. I would, I would just say that as we develop the board structure, I would imagine there would be seats on the board for each of the partners, as well as expertise brought in from inside and outside.
Thank you.
Like Discovery District, it's similar model.
Exactly. I'm good for now. Other questions, councilors?
Counselor Selberg? Maybe more just a comment than a question. I think a lot of those have been answered here. I think this is historic. I think the mayor touched on that. Like you said, it's not just a public-private partnership, it's a public, 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 private partnership. I mean, the impressive group of organizations and people involved with this is really something to be seen. And I think as Counselor Neitz had touched on, we are, I mean, fiscally, pretty much, pretty solid at this point. And what we're going to do with that is take some of those resources and make an investment in something with just endless potential. I can't even imagine, even from where it's starting and where it could go, when you're talking about 500 and talking about 500 employees at 100, making six-figure salaries coming into this city, what that can do for the economy and the ripple effects, and again, as they've talked about, the potential for the other companies and projects and employees to spin off and do whatever they might do with, you know, the experience that they get through all that. I mean, it could really be something, as a matter of fact, I'm completely confident it will be, and as was said earlier, too, when you're able to spend $10 million to get another 80 invested as well, that seems to be like, make a lot of sense. So between the fiscal status, the people involved, the potential and everything it's going to bring to this city, I know that I'm extremely excited about this and I'm happy to support it. So, thank you.
Other questions? Can I have, somebody going to make a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 15, 2022?
So moved Jensen. Second, Jensen.
Moved by Breckie, seconded by Jensen. Other questions, debate, discussion? Seeing none, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Neitzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Breckie.
Yes.
That motion passes, six to zero.
All right, thank you for the chairwork on that. I'll take the gavel back, and we'll move to item 44.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordnances of the city by amending Chapter 30, City Council, Section 30.022, ordinances, resolutions, motions, and other documents requiring council approval by defining substantially alters in SDCL 9-19-7.1. Recommendation set as date of second reading for Tuesday, March 15, 2022. Sponsors, councilmembers Breckie and Starr.
Counselor Breckie.
Thank you, councilors. The next two proposals before you are two amendments that I'm proposing that are to deal with two things. One, I think it's an increased transparency to our processes, and two, it's problem solving. Each of the items that I'm bringing forward, I have heard various comments from virtually all of the council members that, from one time or another, there's been some confusion about how this process is working, and maybe some concern that we might be able to do it better. So the first one is what I'm calling the substantial alteration amendment, and it starts with South Dakota law, which was passed, and requires that city councils may not substantially alter something that's brought before them, and if they do that, then they have to have another notice. And that phrase "substantially alters" is highlighted because that's what's caused us some problems in the city of Sioux Falls. It's been interpreted as the word substantive, and any substantive change then would require at least five days additional notice. And with that interpretation, it's been difficult for us to, because we have to give notice in advance of our motions, and it's kind of handcuffed us when it comes time for discussion. So what I've tried to do here is really a creative use of home rule. I've told people many times that it's not the big things that home rule allows you to do, but it's the small things that seem to be most applicable in home rule cities. And what I've done here is just taken that language "substantially altered" and try to give it a definition that is unique to the city of Sioux Falls and that will help us address our problems of being, like I say, handcuffed in the discussion and allow us to actually amend things right during the discussion without having to go back and renotice. So just to give you a little bit of legislative history on it, it really kind of results from, the original intent of this state provision was to prevent what I would call, you know, hoghousing, and that's a familiar term in South Dakota, or what I would call whole-subject matter changes. And what happened in Mowbridge was, there was an ordinance where they had posted that the money was going to go one place, and when they held the meeting, they actually took the money and put it into a completely different place. So what I've tried to focus on in creating this amendment is creating a definition that would, you know, allow for the public to know what it is we're working about, working on. And if we go beyond that, if we alter it so much so that it really kind of voids out the notice, or it's so completely different, or like a hoghouse, so substantially changed that they don't really know what we were doing, and we didn't give them notice so they were unable to participate. And that's why I call it a transparency ordinance, because it opens it up for people to see us actually make the sausage. We don't be posting our amendments in advance, but we can actually, if the subject matter, you know, for example, in the case when we did the mayor's salary, if that's the subject matter, we can talk about all that salary, we can talk about that whole thing, you know, the numbers, that whole subject, you know, and without having to renotice it. So it may or may not be perfect. I did work with Stacy, Karen, Jim, Tom Greco, Christine and Rick, and we had several versions of it, and I think what we discovered in the process is, there's several ways to define it. This is the best one we thought we came up with. It may need to be tweaked, you know, in the future, but I think this will help take the handcuffs off us and allow us to actually, you know, have a vigorous discussion in public and have amendments in public and not go through this kind of process where we have to try to guess whether or not it's substantially altered. So that's all for that one. The two kind of go together, so I don't.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, let's get a motion on the floor, and then we can go to discussion amongst council.
I'll move to approve.
Second, Starr.
All right, motion by Breckie, seconded by Starr. Discussion amongst council on this one. All right, seeing none, discussion? We'll take a vote, please. And this, excuse me, and this is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 15.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Neitzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Breckie.
Yes.
I think we got six or seven yeses there, so that's going to pass.
Six and a half.
Six to zero, and we'll die to 45.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordnances of the city by amending Chapter 30, Ordnances, Resolutions, Motions, and Other Documents requiring Council Approval by establishing a means for a city attorney, official opinion, and memorandum of legal advice. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 15, 2022. Sponsors, councilmembers Breckie and Starr.
Counselor Breckie.
Thank you. Again, fellow councilmembers, this is an attempt to do as much of the public's business in public as we can whenever we can. And so what this does is actually formalize a process which allows for official city attorney opinions, and it's drafted as a parallel to what is done in the Attorney General's office. And it's a two-pronged situation in which, you know, for matters that aren't protected by law, you know, such as contract negotiations, personnel matters, those things that are protected by SDCL 125.2, or litigation or trial work, those items, the public has a right to hear us be advised and hear the advice that we're getting. And if we want to, this is a discretionary thing between city councilors and the city attorney's office. You'll see a provision in there where the city council can request it, and the city attorney can actually deny it, but if they do, they have to state a reason, and their a reason for denying it, and they can't do, you know, do an unreasonable denial. So basically, it's kind of an agreement between the two, that this is an important issue, it requires a serious legal analysis and an official opinion. And why I like the graphic of the Attorney General opinion, if you turn it back, I'd just like to read that first part, because this is essentially the same thing that I'm trying to do here. The official opinions of the Attorney General are memorandums of legal advice that are not confidential or otherwise privileged and considered to have a statewide impact or other significance. These opinions express a considered and reasoned legal opinion that may or may not be agreed with in a court or other body faced with the same at a later time. The city attorney general may reevaluate, revoke, modify prior opinions as necessary. It should be noted that not all obsolete opinions may be noted in a later opinion. So what I'm contemplating here is really that same process. Again, it's a joint relationship between the city councillor and the city attorney. It doesn't mean you have to ask for one to be public. If you want to get private advice, you just want an email, you just want, you know, a quick answer to a question. This is for situations where it's of legal, serious legal significance, and that's, again, going to be part of the city attorney's determination, and it's worthy of creating an official opinion that is well researched, well reasoned, and it's really the city attorney's office's best guess, you know, in a yes or no fashion, you know, what the law actually is. And it also provides for memorandums, which are a little bit different than opinions. They're more just a recitation, you know, of the law, like when we're in quasi-judicial mode and we get a memorandum that explains what the rules are, but those things are public. And the reason I think it's so important, and the reason I think it's a transparency issue, is because when we're sitting up here, we're being judged, you know, and we're being judged on all of our decisions by those people that eventually vote for us and want, and whether they're going to reelect us or not, is going to be based in part on how good of a job we're doing. And if they don't know that we're making a decision, you know, based on the legal advice that we've received, that that's all confidential, then they're really not being able to judge us fairly, because they don't know what we've been told. So it's really important that the legal advice that they're entitled to as a matter of law be given publicly. And again, it's when the city councillor wants it and asks for it, the city attorney agrees and, you know, publishes the opinion, and then that can be read and used by all the city council members and available to the public. This also will allow that to be kept, so it develops a body of law for future city attorneys and future councilors to be able to research and find, and unless, again, it's modified or superseded, it will just stay there and create continuity from city attorney to city attorney as time goes on. Just, I guess, a little... Yeah, if you can just go to the next one. Yeah. Okay, so yeah, just, you know, just in summary, I mean, the opinion is available to the public and all council members, and again, this is upon special request and determination that it's of value to do that. Consistency of legal opinions between city attorneys, again, the public has a legal right to know how the council is being advised when it's not privileged by state law. It creates trust in government, it raises the level of analysis required for an official opinion, it creates a body of law that can be relied upon by city council members and city attorneys. And I think really overall, what the attempt of this ordinance is to do in the transparency fashion is really, it balances the public's right to know with the city attorney's office's responsibility to protect the city. And in that balance, again, I think it would make us more transparent, and I know that I'm not the only one, I know multiple of the council members have had some frustration with not being able to share legal advice, and I think that sometimes, again, we have been unduly criticized because the public doesn't understand the legal advice that we've received and how that impacts our vote. So again, to the extent that we can be public with our advice as much as possible, I would like to see that happen, and that would be the purpose of this ordinance. And then I would take any questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
I'm David Sokitis, and a couple of years ago, I kind of looked at this issue, it came up in a city council meeting, and I found a court ruling that said that city government does not have attorney-client privilege, and presented that finding here, and that one of like a lead balloon, which is kind of what I expected. So if you don't have attorney-client privilege, then Counselor Breckie's ordinance is not literally required, but since nobody wants to acknowledge the lack of attorney-client privilege, in full support of Counselor Breckie and Pat Starr's ordinance, because it would help promote transparency and confidence in government. So, yeah, good job.
Hi, Stephen Ciano. I also support this effort of transparency and accessibility of the public. It's what I've been promoting since I started coming in here, because I, among many others, have been blocked out. I've been talking with people here and there who don't come here to ask for help because they know that this, they perceive that this administration does not care. And like, if anything, there might be a reprisal. There was one person who there was reprisal evidently for, and I've struggled and I've spoken out and tried to get such things. One of the things that I see going on is, and I don't know how anybody with a legal background might perceive it, but I've been interested in about the incorporation of municipalities. You people seem to oftentimes perceive yourselves...
This is about legal opinions?
As a separate...
So can you keep it to that topic, please?
As a separate-from-the-public entity, which the public is then, as if you were just like a business like Walmart or whatever, availing themselves to, and doesn't have the right to know what's going on in its inner business. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, can I get a motion on the floor on this, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 15?
Move to approve, Breckie.
Second, Starr.
All right, motion by Breckie and seconded by Starr. Discussion amongst council on this one. Counselor Neitzert.
So I guess questions for the author-sponsor, I've been kind of thinking about this. So just kind of help me as I think through this. Hypothetically, could, if somebody approached, a citizen approached a city councillor and asked for some interpretation of the law, could that city councillor bring it to the city attorney and ask for an opinion? Would that be possible or appropriate? Because I could think of examples, there's countless examples where a constituent might ask us to interpret the ordinance, is this legal, that sort of thing.
Well, the privileges, or the ability to do this, does rest in the councillor. So whatever motivates the councillor to ask for it, I guess, is up to them. I don't really think it's probably the role of the councillor to be a conduit for the public unless the councillor's sincerely interested in that issue and does think that it's worthy, again, of going through that process. And I think most times it would be on an issue that's a live issue, not just in a hypothetical sense, not just on some whim, but that it's a live issue that the council's actually working on.
So let's say an opinion is issued by a city attorney, a new one comes in, do you have any thought of what the bar would be, or what hurdle the next one would have to climb to essentially overturn or issue a new opinion saying, I disagree and this is why? Is that...
Usually it would be things like, say, the ordinance has changed completely, like there was a modification of the ordinance, so it's no longer applicable. There might be a Supreme Court case that came down, there might be some sort of an amendment that, you know, you might actually file an amended version of the opinion. Usually there would be some sort of legal thing that happened, or the facts changed completely. If the facts changed completely, most opinions would be tied to the specific facts, and they'd actually be stated in the opinion. So they'd be tied to the opinion based on the facts that were in front of the city attorney at that time.
Should there be some concern that if there's public opinions out there, that we now have public written opinions, and if there's some sort of a dispute or we go to court, you know, maybe we make a different decision, or a new city attorney is in, or whatever, that we now have, you know, there may be something in writing that may potentially vary or be different than what maybe the prevailing legal interpretation is, and then maybe somebody can bring it forward and say, look, even the city said this was fine five years ago. Is that...
Well, again, the city attorney would want to be aware of that, and again, if there was a legal reason, maybe they just missed a case, you know, maybe they made a mistake and they found a case that was later and said, okay, I need to amend this. And again, just like the AGs that talked about some, they're not going to say we're responsible for all the way back, you could bring one out that was old and obsolete, and the city attorney would just have to show that, okay, it had never been revised, but the prevailing law was different or had changed or something.
And my last question would be, so the city charter says a legal officer is the chief legal advisor to the city council, the mayor, and all city departments, officers and agencies, offices and agencies, excuse me. It specifically doesn't say that they're the city attorney for the entire city, does this do that in effect by putting those opinions out there? I mean, because we can get advice either way, I mean, it just so happens we may not be able to discuss it publicly. So I guess that's maybe a concern.
Yeah, the role of the city attorney is really parallel to the role of the Attorney General. I mean, they do, at a certain level, you know, represent the city as a whole, and then they... the individual entities and individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on this item? Counsel, Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't support this. I will be voting affirmative to move it to the second reading, but I believe this is too restrictive on the relationship that city council has with the city attorney.
All right, other discussion here? All right, let's take a vote then.
Councilors Jensen?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Item forty-six, a resolution vacating West Glacier Bay Trail from the east right-of-way line of West Yukon Trail to the west property line of Lot 15 and Block 11 of Hazletine Addition in addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Mihaak County, South Dakota, as shown on Exhibit A, private applicant, Hazletine Partners, LLP.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Brian Wilcox, representing engineering on a couple items this evening. This right-of-way vacation is in the northwest corner of Sioux Falls, just off Marion Road and Benson Road. This is a second reading from the February eighth council meeting. Now, the developer has revised their development plans for this area and will, is requesting to vacate this portion of Glacier Bay Trail as indicated in the yellow hatching area. Will not be utilized for public need and will kind of be used as kind of a private access driveway to the multi-unit housing just to the east. As provided an amendment to this resolution is requesting to retain a utility easement reserved by the city within the vacated right-of-way. Retaining utility easements will protect any existing utility within the vacated right-of-way. Engineering requests your support and approval to vacate this portion of Glacier Bay.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, you got any questions here? Counselor Neitzert?
Brian, I may have missed it, so I apologize if I did, but in the original plan, this was going to be one of the accesses in there. So is access still okay with the number of units and?
Yeah, so it's not going to be public need anyways. It's going to be just more of their private drive just to kind of serve that multi-unit housing just to the east of this single-family along Yukon Trail.
So it'll be a private drive? There'll still be a road, it just won't be a dedicated right-of-way?
It's just more going to kind of function as a driveway, really.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Other questions for Brian? Look for a motion on this item.
Move to approve.
Second, Neitzert.
All right, motion by Sale, second by Neitzert. Counsel, Sale?
Motion to amend inserting and subject to an easement reserved by the city of Sioux Falls in, over, and upon such vacated property as shown in exhibit for the drainage sewer, water, and gas mains, electric telephone lines, cable TV, and all public utilities used required or authorized by the city of Sioux Falls between vacated and and in the last paragraph.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, second by Jensen. Let's take a vote on that amendment, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any other discussion there? Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty-seven, a resolution approving the release of a permanent drainage easement located in Lot 1 Prairie Creek Addition in addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Lincoln County, South Dakota, sponsor mayor.
Brian?
Good evening. This is more of a cleanup item for this property. This drainage easement was recorded by plat in nineteen ninety-seven, as indicated there in the yellow hatching. The, when this property was platted, the development to the west was undeveloped and as that area developed, it kind of realigned the drainage channel, which actually then shifted it more to the west property line of this residential lot. The city drainage engineer and the property owner have reviewed the drainage channel and easement location and have established a new drainage easement on this residential lot as indicated on this exhibit, and that was recorded in January of this year. There's no facilities located within this portion of the easement to be released. Engineering requests your support to release the easement.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone from the public want to speak on this one? Counsel, any questions for Brian on this easement? Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion from Selberg, second by Jensen. Any discussion there? Let's vote on that one.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Any new business tonight, counsel? All right, we'll move to public input. Three minutes per person and on items we didn't talk about earlier in the night, come on up if anyone's here for public input. Good evening.
Good evening, Dennis Hogan. Well, this is reward time. You got five hundred new jobs and along with the multiplier, my study of economics, that probably means three thousand jobs. But anyway, what I want to talk about, you obviously are nationally recognized for your success. Getting through the pandemic without wrecking the economy and making the economy grow and you're respected by many states, many people, and many people with money to invest. But of course, along with success, you know, comes admiration. But at the same time, there are forces out there that are very jealous of your success and some are even angry with your success. And some of them have attachments to money that comes into campaigns. Always said big blogs of money go to some candidate that nobody knows anything about. I mean, I can think of Gascon in California, round and round. Criminal gets arrested and he's out in the afternoon to, you know, that's just a bad example. So most of these topics are too big. People that study these things. Want to bring your attention to something, for you to use research. Judicial Watch is pretty good at watching George Charles. And who puts out like eighteen billion, but it goes into many, many different organizations. Who knows all that stuff? You got to go to somebody, you know, that's an expert. Then, of course, I think I mentioned this once before, terrorism. Here's another good book to read. John Guandolo's FBI, former CIA agent, wrote about a hundred and four cases between and nine eleven. There were convictions that you just don't hear about. Then you might want to, of course, pick up Peter Schweitzer, watching destructive money that might come from China, might come from Russia trying to influence elections. I've got all three of his books. And then, don't forget the laptop from hell. It was written by Miranda Devine, a laptop that was left at a computer repair shop and they didn't come back to get it. So after ninety days, he owned it. Now, we've got information of what was on that laptop. I'm sure a lot of you know what I'm talking about. And you've done a great job, like I said, two years ago, two years I've been here. I've seen nothing but positive.
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. Anyone else here for public input tonight? Good evening.
Hello, my name's Catherine Riffle. I'm an advocate for the people downtown and my concerns are not just for the people downtown, they're for our whole United States of America. Our government is supposed to be freedom of speech, et cetera, et cetera. You fill in the blanks. Anyway, I'm not keen on our president making bad decisions, especially when he helped to pay for the COVID that came in. There's nobody saying anything to put him down on mass genocide, but yet they want to turn around and let Putin get away with stuff. But what I'm getting at is our government leaders are making bad decisions. They're being paid for votings, they're getting votes in on their name, and I'm a firm believer, if you can't get in that seat on your own merits, you don't belong there. So anyway, I am not backing anything like the crap that's going on now, and I certainly don't back police unions. I was given a piece of paper here, a flyer, and I agree with it. And I'm going to say some of the stuff that I agree with. Okay, working with the city of city council and city employees, and we have our rules and our laws and everything is supposed to be so secret and all, I'd much rather have you open the records instead of having all the secrecy and let us know about the deals that's being made. I like respecting the petitions instead of ignoring them, being responsible people to vote and have a good reason for your vote, to be able to explain your vote if you're asked. I do like penalties for crimes, but I don't like the prisons being overrun. Part of my work in my years has been prison ministry. I've worked in state and federal prisons in different states, et cetera, for many years. And I believe that if you work with an inmate and you have counseling and you do what you got to do, you improve that person. So they go out and they'd be a prosperous person in your community. I've also had some transition homes, men and women's, so I know what I'm talking about. There's a great deal of deliberate disinformation when it comes to crime, tobacco, drugs. I mean, it's just ridiculous. You want to block marijuana, but you don't want to find out what good it does? Well, I'll tell you what, marijuana is better in a lot of places because right now we have pharmaceuticals that are causing us a lot of problems. They want to hit everybody with mental drugs now because of the deaths and all with the COVID and all. Of course, you're going to be depressed and worried and lonely, et cetera. That doesn't mean to hit you up on mental drugs. People can't get jobs if they're on mental drugs, et cetera, et cetera. Fill it in. So it's just something for you to think about. I think, yeah, you can stiffen the crime for the meth. That is real bad. I have a lot of people downtown with meth and I'm not approving of it. So thank you for hearing me. Thank you.
Good evening.
Sheriff of Sioux Falls, so I told Chief Tum that I was going to come here. I was just going to tell it a little bit. We had two officers that had got arrested on sex crimes. And I told him that the public needs to be addressed in a little big fashion. Because I had my phone being blown up because people don't want to call the police or people don't want to call the police because they're going to get punched downtown, what happened downtown with another officer. I want to stress that I told Chief Tum that I was going to address the public on this. Their hiring process is very thorough. I'm not going to get into how thorough. Everything that they're doing, they're doing as an accredited police department. Accreditation says to put your policeman on a year. They put him on eighteen months. Through the hiring process of this police department, they're doing everything that are to do as far as accreditation. They, the in-depth of the police department goes into psychological evaluation. They go to lie detector test. They go in-depth through your neighborhood, your spouse or your previous relationships. And they get into certain things and certain questions on certain crimes in the hiring process on a lie detector test, okay? So I'm sure y'all can read between lines. These individuals that did what they did got caught in the very early stages. I can tell you that. We have a good police department force. We have a good leader, Chief Tum. I was nuts for Chief Tum's at all. Is there improvements in that police department? Absolutely, there is. Improvements in that police department. Well, we have a lawsuit on that guy that punched that dude in a genitorial area. Absolutely, we probably will. But those occurrences that happened downtown with that officer happens every day in bigger cities, unfortunately does. And if you look through the history of the police department, there was only one incident of that individual with a sex of force in a city for years and years and years. There's not a history of this. In some police departments, we have a history of this every week to every two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. We got this child pornography, excessive force. We got that. It's normal, but it's not normal here. So I want the citizens to keep calling the police and trust this police department.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. Good evening, Chester D. Young, Sioux Falls. As a resident and property owner inside the city of Sioux Falls, I don't have much of a say on anything. I have very little clout. I can't vacate a street. I cannot change the zoning classification on a piece of land. In fact, if I want to do almost anything to my property, I need permit and a permission from city engineering. As residents, you engineers, along with everybody else, we have to adhere to the rules and standards the city has created. Yes, sometimes what we think is right may not be what the city thinks is right. That's when you have to go to the rules, regulations, and standards the city has created and they enforce on everybody else. As commissioners, as a body, you vote and either pass a proposal presented to you by the engineers or you reject it. You have zoning coming forward, street vacations. You hear everything, then you hear your rebuttal, and then you decide, yes, we can do this or no, it's not a good deal. As a citizen, I can rebut anything at a meeting as long as I know about it. If I don't know about it, I have to expect the city engineers to actually have the best interest of everybody in mind. When it comes to shapes and places, the engineering department, according to Mr. Bieber, had around fifty pieces of property they determined could and should fall into the new zoning classifications. My guess is they all had similar characteristics. I'm sure they did not look at each piece individually. Five thousand East Grant Street fit the criteria, so the engineers proceeded to have the city commission approve the changes. No one showed up to rebut it, so the commissioners, assuming the engineers knew what they were doing, passed it with no problems. Once the zoning passed, the doubled housing capacity potential of that piece of land. After everything passed, the city examining what they had for five thousand East Grant Street, there was probably a developer or a property owner looking at it and they started looking, they go, uh-oh, we've got a problem here. What are we going to do? How do I know that? It seems that a former city employee actually had my brother and myself in his office talking about this project. He couldn't tell me what it was about or anything. And we just weren't interested. And about, oh, a year later, he comes back and he calls me on the phone personally, wanting me to get Grant Street in. And he just wasn't very clear. I said, no, we're not interested. So what it came down to, and I'm just guessing, it's, I'm guessing, the city made some zoning classifications, discovered it too late, and it's an oops, sorry, I'm out of time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? Good evening.
Hi, Stephen Ciano. I recall a time, I guess it was close to a couple of years back, there was this COVID hoax. Sure, there was a virus, but there was a hoax involved in what was proper to do, what was essential to do. At first, we were lied to by one Dr. Fauci and those who have continued to follow him, I refer to as Fauchists. It was politics masquerading as science and it kept on changing. The narrative kept on changing and it was passed on down through CDC and health departments, even here locally, statistics were skewed in order to favor a business and making money off people's fears, scaring people into submitting and scaring them into- in order to favor a business, making money off people's fears, scaring people into submitting, and scaring them into thinking that this was essential, and those who didn't go along with it were actually threatening their grandmas. It's like, no, this wasn't the science. Now, a couple of years later, it is pretty much common knowledge, and still some people are running around with masks on and promoting the vaccine, although this so-called vaccine was never a vaccine. It was experimental. There was never any scientific controlled system to clear it for safety and efficacy, and it was shown not to be safe or efficable. So here you have this wolf in sheep's clothing, you know, and this has followed their policy with injecting unknown substances into our children for when I was young, where nothing was proven then. And I've studied that way back in the 60s and then in the 80s to confirm what I believe to be true now, that there was no evidence. Besides, I believe that there is a higher power, intelligence, whatever. Our bodies have an immune system, and that should be respected. And don't play God with our bodies or our children's bodies under any excuse. It just was never proper, and I've always been about what is proper, as I see it. That's why I quit religion very early in life, and I went in with my own spiritual beliefs, and I've been attacked for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for general public input tonight? All right, see none. Look for a motion to adjourn us out.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Breckie, second by Jensen. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
opposed, we are adjourned. Have a good night.